Get started. Thank you for joining us here for our town council meeting. We are going to start with the adoption of the agenda. Any questions, comments, changes to the agenda, or motion to adopt the agenda as is?
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Majority approves, motion carries. We will go with the agenda as is this evening, starting with our presentations. Boys and Girls Club, Mr. Summers.
Thank you Mayor Day, limited council members. We are talking a lot about what the future of our community looks like. We talk a lot about what kind of partners do we need to reach out and engage as we think about meeting the needs of our children. Your number one strategic priority in the current, at the most current retreat was this idea of unsupervised youth. What do we do to help where our program's traditionally in? What can we do to expand that space? So Mayor Day, Representative Robertson, several representatives from the town of Knightdale met with Matt Taliaferro, who is the director for the Boys and Girls Club, just to kind of understand, what programming do you offer? What would that look like if we asked the Boys and Girls Club to come to Knightdale? Very good conversation. Subsequently, Matt and I had lunch last week, conversation was very good as well. What I requested of Matt and Mayor Day, and I talked about this, is come in and kind of talk to us a little bit about the Boys and Girls. Let's get to high level as we're moving toward community center construction and needing additional partners to help us meet the needs of our community. And with that, I'll let Matt come up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor Day. Thank you so much for having me, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about what's near and dear to my heart, which is the Boys and Girls Club. And I thought I would start off by, from the standpoint of this presentation, I'm going to assume that many of you know nothing about the club. I want to talk to you about what we do, our mission, and then I'll get into some specifics. I did bring for each one of you here tonight, that is our 2023 annual report. We're in the process of preparing our 2024 annual report. In there, you can go more in depth about, to learn more about the club and what we do. But it's always important for me to start out with the mission and what it is that we do. And you can see that here is to inspire and enable all young people. And these next words are critical, especially those who need us the most. And our job is to help them reach their full potential. Especially those who need us the most is important because when you take a look at the, at the Boys and Girls Club and our organization, predominantly, we serve the children who are most at risk and those who need us. And again, we'll talk more about that. Just from a historical perspective, the Boys and Girls Club has, is over 150 years old from the nationwide standpoint. But here in Wake County, it started 58 years ago in 1967. That, what you see there is a picture of the very first, it was actually the Boys Club back then. It was, that was started down in Oakdale, right there on Lane Street, and 10 years later, expanded and moved over to, on what you, if you guys have been on North Raleigh Boulevard, you see where our offices are located. We have three clubs right there, the Boys Club, the Girls Club, and then the Teen Center. And that property was purchased in 1977. Just a little bit about me and how long I've been with the organization. I just joined Boys and Girls Club of Wake, and now we're, and I'll talk to you in a second about Johnston County, but I've been here for about nine months or so. I moved here last August, but I'm not new to the Boys and Girls Club movement. I was CEO of the Boys and Girls Club in Benton County, Arkansas. If you've been out to Arkansas, the home of Walmart, that's where I came from. And I took over Ralph Capps. If you hear the name or see the name, Ralph Capps was my predecessor at the Boys and Girls Club of Wake County. He was the CEO for 50 years. He was the one who built the clubs down there on the Boulevard. And he unfortunately passed away a year ago this past November. And so they invited me to come in. My goal as CEO is to continue to build on the legacy that Ralph left us. What you see here on the, on the screen right now, since that club was founded in 1967, with that one club and then moved over to the Boulevard, we've grown from one small location now to 10 locations across both Wake and Johnston County. And some statistics there that you see, we have approximately 70 staff members, a large number of volunteers. In 2024, we served over 3,844 youth. And that's the total number of kids that we served. On a daily basis, what that equates to is about 1,000 kids a day. And that's again, across all 10 locations. We have small clubs, we have large clubs. Our smallest club serves, let's just call it around 25 to 30 kids a day or so. And that is in Parish Manor, that's in a mobile home community. We just opened that up last May. Our largest club serves over 200. We have two of those clubs, one's in Wake Forest and the other's over in Zebulon. I would encourage any of you, if you ever want to come and visit a club, please stop by. We would love to give you a tour and show you what we do. The clubs are open every day after school from roughly 3:00 in the afternoon, 2:30, 3:00 or so, and we close at 8:00. We allow the parents to work a full workday. The kids come in, we provide, currently, we provide transportation to the, to the kids. We go and pick them up after school, we bring them into the club, we feed them, so they get a hot meal. We help them with their homework, we do all kinds of activities, they get physical activity. There's not a single kid who leaves in the evening to go home without having their homework done. We provide caring, adult mentors, all of our staff are trained in mental, youth mental health first aid. We have a full-time, licensed social worker on staff, so we help them with their mental health needs. A lot of folks think that the Boys and Girls Club, they have a misperception that we're just an after-school daycare program. That could not be further from the truth. When they walk through our doors, again, we have three main pillars, academic success, healthy lifestyles, and character and leadership. We make sure that these youth be, that they're put on a positive path in their life, and so we help them make good decisions. We serve all the way from kindergarten up through seniors and high school, okay? We do all of that for $7.50 a year. I mean, let that sink in for a second, in terms of the services that we provide. If you have children and you know the cost of daycare, or you know the cost of after-school care, because of the partnerships we have in the community, and our donors, and our grants, and all that, we have a budget of about $6 million. Only 200,000 of that comes from youth, or from the families in the programming. So that just puts it into perspective. 5.8 million comes from all of our fundraising efforts, only 200,000 comes from the parents and the kids that we serve. Okay. I'm going to play just a quick video here, this will give you a little bit of a snapshot of what it is that we do.
It changed my life in a million different ways. From the programs I got to participate in, the lessons that I learned, the staff that I worked with. It raised me to be the person I am today through and through. We've got sports and recreation, we've got healthy lifestyles, the fine arts, character and leadership, all programs designed and dedicated to creating a child's great future.
Every day, there's almost 1,000 kids that you know are engaged in some positive activity.
Really good to see, it's really, it's a good feeling as well, to know that they feel safe, or to know that they can be themselves here.
As we're still growing, we don't have all the answers, so definitely having that one person that reported us, always giving advice and meaningful advice means a lot to us.
You know, really just whatever you didn't get as a kid, whether it is us giving those scholarships, or if it is us giving that mentoring that they may need, a child gets that. And maybe they go for it.
The club is four walls filled with a bunch of opportunities, because it's just a place where you can help discover who you want to be and discover more about yourself.
The Boys and Girls Club has really improved my confidence in general to just keep on pushing forward.
One of the last youth that you saw in that video, Nicholas, if you saw him, he is a senior at Wake Forest High School. He is one of our staff members. He's been in the club ever since he was like six years old. He's just received from us via one of our donors a full scholarship to college, so his college will be paid for. We have 20 graduating seniors coming up, and we have seniors, just finished our senior signing day. Our board will be recognizing all of them, and they all have a path for their future. Another lady that you saw in there, her name is Cece Hardy, she is an embedded employee of Wake Tech. She is, works full-time inside of the club to ensure that all of our rising tweens and teens have a path for, whether that is college, whether that is a four-year college, a community college, or just a career that, in a plan for the future. So that, that's the kind of impact that we have. The last statistics that I'll leave you with is that across the country, Boys and Girls Clubs, our alumni say that over 50% of them say that the club saved their life. Kept them out of jail, kept them out of trouble. We provided them structure, we provided them opportunity. That's what we do. This is just, I mean, I could have made this slide to be about 50 different circles. You know, workforce readiness, mental health, character development, STEM, all of that stuff happens inside of the club. During the summer, we're open from 7:30 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening. We have a summer camp out in Nash County that we send them to for a week. The other weeks, they come into the club and we provide programs during the summer to help offset learning loss during the summer, and we provide a fun, safe place during the summer as well. Whoops, I think I just, there we go, hit the wrong button. These are just some pictures. I mean, I get my energy when I go out into the club and I see the kids and all the various different activities. We have sports. You see the one there, there's, we have a youth hockey program in partnership with the, with the Hurricanes. They provide us ice time, and they go over and we teach the kids how to play hockey. We take them on field trips to help them learn about different careers. There is all kinds of things that happen at the club, and we couldn't be more proud of what it is that we do. Our goal is to serve as many kids in the community as we, as we possibly can. Of course, that takes a lot of conversations like this to help us understand where we need to be placing our time, money, effort, or whatever, in the communities that need us the most. And I will stop there and answer any questions that you have. Oh, one last thing. We are opening up a new facility. It's new to us anyway. We're doing renovations on Fox Road. It's a, it used to be the Body of Christ Church. If you've been past there, we're going to be opening that facility up in, in July next month. That Brentwood facility is currently serving about 80 kids a day, and this new facility allows us to serve somewhere between 200 and 250, so almost tripling our capacity. So, that's it. Thoughts, questions, Mayor Day?
Thank you so much for sharing. I know the conversation that we had, and just sharing with others, I'm excited to have the conversation and see if there's opportunities and see what we could possibly do in Knightdale, because I truly believe in Boys and Girls Club, and personally, being a testament, because I grew up going to the Boys and Girls Club. And so I gained a lot from it personally. And so now also being able to see more of what you're doing now and what's happening in the community. Thank you for taking the time to share that.
It's my pleasure.
Any questions or comments?
I probably don't know enough, and I'm interested. So when you show like, which high schools and which middle schools, like what schools are you pulling from in our area, say, that you might look to pull from?
Wow, just tried to inhale it swallow at the same time. Great question. Right now, a lot of what our service area is defined by where we can provide transportation. We have a fleet of, let's, 15, 16 buses. We send those buses out from the locations and we go and pick the kids up, and we bring them back. Wake Forest, in Wake Forest, they actually bus the kids to the club, but mainly we go out and pick them up. So if you take a look at the Boulevard, all the various different schools around, we hit as many of them as we possibly can. There are a lot of other parents who will drop the kids off at, at the, you know, at our club and at our location, but we can only provide so much transportation. We do have one school in Wake County, or one club in Wake County that's actually inside of a school. It's at the Washington Elementary Club. That is a magnet school, so a lot of the kids will come from that magnet school. But because those kids get dropped back off from multiple different schools all around, that particular club serves probably 15 or 16 different schools, just because of, you know, the nature of the school. Transportation is our number one barrier to, to come into, it's the number one barrier for after-school care in general, if you eliminate costs, right? We're not in the transportation business. We provide it because it's necessary, but it's something that, to be honest with you, is difficult for us, just because the cost of maintaining buses and fleets and bus drivers and all the above is tough for us.
And what are the age ranges?
Kindergarten through seniors and high school, age 18.
And are there any requirements for being allowed to?
Absolutely not. We, all children, it does not matter. Income doesn't matter. I mean, if you take a look at our demographics, for the large part, a lot of the, I would say probably 80% of our kids are on free and reduced lunch, but it is not a requirement at all. Other thoughts?
Not so much a thought, but I would say I, in my previous corporate life, had the opportunity of partnering with a place at a table and going out and helping to do the feeding at the Zebulon facility a time or so. An amazing group of, for one, the staff out there is absolutely.
It's a great club, yes.
And just the energy of the kids. It was an amazing time. And I echo Mayor Day's sentiment, you know, we really look forward to sort of expanding discussion, looking at where there may be some opportunities, how we can possibly align, and see where this lands. So, but I fully support the mission of the work and, you know, helping to provide that structured environment for kids, it's so needed.
We look forward to further conversations. I've had multiple board members, we just finished our strategic plan for the next five years. I mean, the number one thing, as we take a look at our growth, is to ensure that we are in the communities where there is need. And from what I hear, what I'm hearing from you is, there's need for after-school, out-of-school time programming and structure. We welcome conversations with you. We, from the standpoint of what it would take, obviously, to get something like this going, you know, that's going to take some, some, again, just sitting down and rolling up our sleeves and figuring out how we can do it. But we're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Once again, appreciate you coming, sharing a little bit more, and look forward to future conversations. Next is the consent agenda. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda, any, or motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Majority approves, motion carries. We will move to our public hearing for the evening, FY26 budget, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor Day, council. You know, getting older, we have to turn your phones sideways for your notes. This is the public hearing for the FY26 budget recommendation. This is the public's opportunity to speak on the budget that has been out for public comment now since your work session meeting. This hearing is being held in accordance with the Local Budget and Fiscal Control Act, which is General Statute 159-8. So traditionally, the way I present this, I'm going to do the same I've done it in the past, an overview and then the budget itself. So we look at the budget, basically in North Carolina, we have strong fiscal controls over how local governments can operate. The group of state laws that govern how a budget must be prepared and adopted is commonly referred to as the Local Budget and Fiscal Control Act. And basically, essentially, you are required to budget and spend money in accordance with this set of laws. You can't expend any funds unless that money has been properly budgeted through an annual budget ordinance, a project ordinance, or financial plan adopted by the unit's governing board, in our case, our town council. There is a budget calendar, as you would expect, and that we have talked about in previous years, and it has three major milestones. The first is that before April 30th of each calendar year, the departmental requests and revenue estimates will be submitted to the town manager. The second is that not later than June 1 of every calendar year, you will get a budget recommendation accompanied by a budget message. And then finally, no later than July 1 of each calendar year, you will adopt a budget, which commences with the first day of the new fiscal year. The budget is primarily composed of two major documents. The first is the message, and the second is the ordinance, and each of them have their own state laws associated with it. The budget message is simply narrative that is submitted by the budget officer, who is the manager in this case for all governments. And basically, there's some key things that should be included in this document. What are the organizational goals for the upcoming year? Any important features of the budget? Are there going to be any recommended major changes in current fiscal policy? And are there really any changes in the goals and the appropriation levels from the previous years? It is accompanied by the ordinance itself. State law specifically says, "The ordinance may be in any form that the board considers most efficient and enabling it to make the fiscal policy decisions embodied therein, but it shall make appropriations by department, function, or project, and show revenues by major source." This is a pretty standard way that local governments present this across jurisdictions with municipalities and counties. It's designed to be in a way where year in and year out, you can see where's the money being allocated and what changes might we see. The budget adoption process for us goes like this. The recommendation is open for public inspection upon submission to the council per state law. The applicable date for us was, it was opened up on May the 13th of 2025. The town clerk has a function in the budget adoption process, as we see in previous years. She advises the media that the recommendation is available and publishes the date and time of the public hearing in a local newspaper of general circulation that occurred on May the 7th of 2025. And then, not earlier than 10 days after it is presented to the council, a public hearing must be held prior to adoption. That is where we are tonight. The budget has been open for inspection, or it will be open for inspection from May 13th through June 18th. And then at your next meeting this month, your regular council meeting, you will be asked to adopt the recommended budget with any changes that you deem appropriate, which will be June the 18th, which will get us in before the budget calendar of July 1, and we will one, and we will be prepared to enact our new budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So, the big question is, what's in the budget recommendation? We talked about this at length at the work session. This is, this is the, the formal presentation of what it is. There's the annual operating budget cover for the upcoming year, and this is the, the recommendation. I am not recommending a change in the property tax rate. The property tax rate, my recommendation is to leave it at forty-four cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, no changes from the previous year. What are the things that, that, that we are keeping an eye on here in the background that continue to be a challenge for the local government community? One is the continued escalating costs of goods and services. They continue to go up. We have not seen them plateau or valley in any way, shape, or form, nor do we have any confidence that we will see that in the near future. As we talk about a lot around here in local government in Wake County, there is significant competition for limited personnel resources. We are fortunate, have a lot of really talented people that work here, people that I'm very proud of, people that you are very proud of, but the competition for people is very, very real for the local government community. And then the other factor, which is not going to surprise any of you, is this continued population influx into Knightdale. You know, we still see sixty-six residents a day moving into Wake County, and we, we are a, a hot commodity right now, and a lot of folks want to live here, and it's something that we're very, very proud of. But with the continued population influx comes this additional expectation to expand and provide quality services. So, at a forty-four cent tax rate, you're looking at a total assessed property valuation of about four point six six billion dollars. At forty-four cent tax rate, that generates twenty point three eight million dollars. If you want to see where we fall on what we think, okay, let me be clear, is going to be the pecking order of tax rates in the upcoming year because a lot of the budgets are still out and, and tax rates obviously aren't finalized until they're adopted. Knightdale comes in at forty-four cents. We're, we're, we're in the middle, little above the middle of where, where we are versus the landscape around us. The tax rate is not indicative of how successful a government would be, but it is always good to kind of know what the landscape looks like for that property tax rate. If we look at the annual operating budget, the first thing that I always try to remind you is, you know, running a local government in North Carolina, or operating a local government in North Carolina is different than the private marketplace. One of the most important things we have to remember is by state law, the budget must be balanced at the time of adoption, and the budget must be balanced at the conclusion of the fiscal year. So, what you're seeing here is our revenues, any other finance sources that are coming in versus our projected expenditures, any other financial uses there. What it equates to is approximately a forty-six million dollar budget totaling all funds. What is a very important piece of information is this is about an eleven point eight five percent increase over the previous year. Once again, we continue to see our community growing by leaps and bounds, and one of the positive outcomes of that is our financial position continues to improve annually. If we look at the general fund revenues, right, this is where the, the revenue side is going to come in, that's going to support this operation. Obviously, the property tax, the AdVOL arm tax, is the primary driver of our finances. It's increasing from about eighteen point eight million dollars to about twenty point four million, about an eight point four percent increase over the previous year, which is interesting to me because after all these years, we look at that number and we've become accustomed to it, when as little as ten and fifteen years ago, that would have been unheard of. Nobody would have thought you could see that kind of revenue appreciation in such a short period of time. Sales tax is obviously another big driver of where we are at six point six million. It's growing upwards of four percent. And as you kind of go down the list, you can see where our money is going to be generated in the upcoming year, the majority of which is property and sales tax. If we're looking at property taxes as a percentage of the total revenues, in FY twenty-five, a little over fifty-one percent, in FY twenty-six, a little over fifty percent. So, what we see here is growth, but we also see stability in the property tax revenue stream. Now, if we look at where those expenditures are going to be spent per department, you can see there's a big increase in administration. We've expanded the staff, brought in new programs that we're going to be offering out of that. These positions will change a little bit over the year, but what I always try to reassure you is the changes you see are just essentially where we are signing the same work we're really doing. There are areas which, where you'll see expansions, but for the most part, you see a budget operating like you think it should. You know, your two largest departments, police and fire, obviously, they are going to be the bulk of where we spend our money, closely followed by public works, and then the other professional services coming in behind it. An interesting, another way, interesting way of looking at it is, for this budget, about twenty-one and a half million dollars will be spent on our people, about eight point nine million dollars on operations, outsourcing professional services at about two point six million. Our capital outlay is going to be about two point three million. Debt service represents about three point eight million dollars this year, transfers here at one point one million, totaling once again about a forty point five million dollar product. Another way to look at this, we looked at this in the budget work session, is, and the interesting way is if we took a dollar bill and we divided it up and that was a single tax dollar that we received, where is that money going? Well, twenty-five cents on the dollar goes to everybody except police, fire, public works, recreation, and debt service. Police and fire alone represent forty-four cents of every tax dollar that we receive. Public works, fourteen cents. Recreation has grown to represent seven cents, and debt service is comfortably at about ten cents on every dollar. So, what are the investments we're making now that we've kind of looked at this budget? Well, personnel investments remain what we discussed at the budget work session, twenty new positions. That represents a seven percent growth of the workforce this year in addition to a seven percent growth of the workforce last year. It is a commitment that we have to our employment forecast for FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. We need to grow an additional twenty-three percent of forty-nine positions. We do have a three percent cost of living adjustment here for all employees to offset the increased cost of living in Wake County, and we are going to fund performance-based pay up to four percent annually as well. We are seeing our increased commitment to the employee on their monthly insurance costs go from seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars. What that comfortably means is any employee here at a single level can be completely paid for on their benefits, and then the, the secondary benefits for adding family members, obviously, that increases the, the commitment that they may have to make partially themselves. New positions that we're looking to fund, kind of what we talked about, things you would expect for a growing community, putting some admin and support in community relations, a new planning technician for development services to help with the increased permitting volume, a new planner in development services to help with the new review volume. We've got three captains in the fire department, three lieutenants in the fire department, three firefighters in the fire department as we get ready to bring our next fire company online sometime in calendar year twenty-six when the new apparatus is delivered. We have a new athletic superintendent position, captain in the police department, three police officers, two maintenance workers, and an HR technician. So, when I look at this, what I see is pretty balanced, the heavier investments made in the frontline services, but the support services are also getting needed personnel support, which is always our greatest challenge here, is you've got about a hundred, and you will have, if this budget gets adopted as submitted, you will have a hundred and eighty-five people serving over twenty-three thousand. It's heavy lift, but it is something we're proud to do well. If you look at where we're going to spend what we call our major capital investments, the big projects, we have a law enforcement construction, law enforcement center under construction currently. We've got pedestrian improvements on the Boulevard, Knightdale Boulevard and Old Night Road currently going in. We've got two major pieces of fire apparatus, an engine and a fire tiller ladder truck, which is the really large ladder truck, coming in in twenty-seven. And we've got some design work going in place for what grade separated, grade separation over the wide water, putting wide waters extension over the railroad would look like at a grade separated level. All of these projects represent current strategic priorities of the town council. If we look at kind of at a high level, where are we going to spend what we call our CIP dollars? Secondary investments, but at a level that require they're, they're broken out of the operational budgets, essentially things over ten thousand dollars. At a high level, we've got two point six million in this area. You've got things like public art, necessary mowers and equipment for public works, the clock tower, which is something we'll be discussing with you here shortly on the, as we move into our centennial celebration in calendar year twenty-seven. We have comprehensive vehicle replacements in departments, updating the restrooms at the pool, which would be the last really antiquated piece of that property that needs to come online. We see the increased need for lights. This year, we're going to put some expanded lights at the ballfields at Knightdale Elementary, an office that we can put in at KSP to help with our, our park ranger program. We've got street paving. We've got some expanded needs oddly enough these days for some inclement weather, the cold weather varieties, so spreader and snowplow, and then new vehicles. You know, you've got new vehicles coming in for community relations, new vehicles for police in addition to their replacements, new vehicles for fire in addition to their replacements, and then new vehicles for parks and rec. So, once again, pretty balanced, little heavy on the frontline services, but what you would expect to see. The capital improvements program for what we would call general fund restricted, those dollars that we receive that can only be spent for certain amounts. We've got four hundred thousand dollars in here for the annual, we call PAL bill paving program. That's just the state share that we get from the gas tax to maintain local roadways. Stormwater, we've got one point seven three million worth of recommendations in it for this year. We've got a stormwater pond at the lower field at Knightdale Station that needs to be rehabilitated. We've got major stormwater projects for Poplar Street, Breckenridge, both of which have permits in hand. Forest Drive, we feel confident we'll get permits on hopefully this fall. And then we have two regional stormwater study projects that we would like to do in the upcoming fiscal year. So, kind of talk it through at a high level, whereas, you know, it's a lot of words, you know, so from my standpoint, how do I break this down in a way that really articulates? Okay, what are we doing to actually serve the people in our community? What do we do in to make their lives better? So, this is a way that I've always broken it out. Where we always default to in Knightdale at an elected level and at an operational level is, what are the five values that guide what our citizens say are most important? Our citizens tell us every year when we reevaluate where we are with our strategic plan, they want to be safe. They want to be connected and inclusive. They want to have an opportunity to know their neighbors. They want to know that everybody is welcome in Knightdale. They want to work towards sustainability. They want a community that does take account for what the future needs to be and what we can do to protect it. They want to be active and healthy beyond just being physically active. This has become to mean so much more in today's world, and they want to know that the men and women that serve them, whether they be in a law enforcement uniform, or it be something, somebody here at town hall that they may never see that works in an office, they want to know above all else that these men and women know what they're doing and they're committed to serving other people. So, as we look at this stuff, if we look at, you know, organizational excellence, we have a commitment to service delivery. All of the critical operation needs submitted by the various departments are met within this budget. Very little was cut. We've got twenty new positions recommended, which meets our current employment forecast. We brought in a new assistant town manager to really help cultivate our leadership voice and where we're going to be going. We've got Cola and Merritt in here to try to account for the increased cost of living and keep our people, which is so important. We've got commitment to our professional development and succession programs. We've got new facilities coming online here for HR and for finance, as well as all the vehicles and the replacement programs that are necessary to maintain this level of excellence. When we look at commitment to safety, where we spend the bulk of our money, we have a law enforcement center that is currently under construction across the street at thirty-three thousand square feet, which will clearly send a message to our citizens that the police department is here to protect you. They are a department that is at the forefront of what we do. They are a department who will continue into the foreseeable future to be a flagship for Eastern Wake County, one that others can look to and, and really understand what it means to invest in law enforcement the right way. We have commitments to their fleet, which is a lot, a lot of police cars. It's interesting when I look at that every year, how much that program goes because not only are you refreshing what we have, you got to bring the new vehicles on for the new officers themselves. The fire department has grown five times its size during my tenure, new stations, two new stations over the last eighteen months, all the excellent work they've done. We've gotten four new trucks here, we've got two more coming in calendar year twenty-six, and a new fire company that will come online within this fiscal year. We look at the quality of life investments, right? So, it is about serving other people. It's not just about providing for the staff. It's also about thinking about, what about the citizens? How do they perceive us? What do they use? What would they want to know? Well, there's no property tax increase, and that's harder to do than most folks realize in a, in an area and in a region where the growth rate is just so high. The tax dollar gets fatigued very quickly. What I would want people to know is, the elected officials, Mayor, Mayor Jessica Day and this town council govern, this is where we're going as an organization. My job is to make it happen. The staff's job is to provide the services necessary to carry out your policy visions. Well, a hundred percent of the things you said you want to do within our current strategic goals and priorities, they are provided for within this budget. The citizens are actually leading these organizations through the positions in which they have empowered you to hold. The Centennial Clock Tower, it's a big deal. We got a hundred-year anniversary coming up. We're going to make a commitment here where people understand how much we care and love for our community. Street paving is in there. You've got major pedestrian. You've got a public arts partnership with United Arts Council. We'll be the first community to have that level of relationship with the Arts Council. The community pool, we continue to invest in it because we love it, we want it to be well, we want it to be attractive, we want it to be something that our citizens would say, hey, I'll go there before another aquatic amenity. We continue to expand our sports programming with the lighting, as we're seeing more and more after dark programming, making commitments to, to the park as well. And then Vision Zero, this idea that, wow, we recognize a lot of people are coming to town, a lot of vehicles are moving around. How do we make sure that our pedestrians and our bicyclists are safe? This philosophical vision, which is so interwoven in our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive transportation plan, this is something that is fully funded in the budget. We look at the environmental portion of this. We have a fully funded stormwater program we don't talk a lot about. We have a sustainability program here that we want to continue to grow as time goes on, but there's a lot of commitment made at the environmental level, which really starts in the UDO itself and in the decisions you make as you approve the various developments that come before the town. So, it's a lot of words. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but there's three, three recommendations I have for you here after you have received comment. One would be, answer any questions you have. The second would be, take any comments on the budget that you receive, but once you're done with that, close the public hearing. You would direct Ms. Smith, our town clerk, to place this budget in the updated fee schedule along with it on the June eighteenth agenda for consideration of adoption for the upcoming fiscal year. It's pretty quick for me on a budget presentation. Yes, Counselor Morris isn't here to remind me, I need to go faster. What questions can I answer for you?
So, I'll just ask, the PAL bill funding, you know, we, we fully, we get that from DOT, we spend it. Do we know if we are doing well? And I know we do this study each year to figure out how the pavement's doing, and we take, we, you know, spread it around and we do the worst pavement. Do we know if we're moving up or sliding back? Do we, I mean, do we have an idea?
An honest assessment of the PAL bill program would be this. On a given year, a local government is doing well to maintain the status quo. So, this is at our, this is a situation that's bigger than the town of Knightdale. You know, the, the emergence of EVs, the, the gas taxes and what it once was, and even in its, the thing that I always want people to understand is, governments are designed to grow or shrink incrementally. They're not designed really to take these big swings that we see growth challenges with. So, in the upcoming year, there will be a new pavement condition index study done. We do one every handful of years. It's a tiered way to understand where are the, the worst roads, where are the ones we need to pay the most attention to. Does the PAL bill fully meet the needs of the local roadway system? I would say it does not, but it is the best vehicle we have. Philosophically, what we do as a staff is, we spend that money. Okay, that is restricted revenues that come to us from the state of North Carolina with the expectation that the twenty percent of roads roughly in, in a municipal jurisdiction that are not state-owned, you are using that money for their maintenance and upkeep. We do well at keeping the roads from falling into a serious place of disrepair. What I would like to see, maybe during my career, it's nothing that you can control, it's a higher level conversation that begins with the general assembly, is when can we get to a place where we are now getting ahead on these needs instead of maintaining status quo? So, to answer your question, we do pretty good. We do spend the money that is given to us and do the best we can to meet the needs. I'm not aware of any roadways that are so problematic right now. They would not be addressed in the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
All right. Any other? I think we've had the questions between the work session and this meeting, so. This is a public hearing item, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, you may come forward at this time. If not, I'll bring it back to counsel for any last comments, questions, or a motion.
Just take a second and thank staff for their hard work on this budget. I know there's always going to be more, excuse me, more needs than there is, there are finances to fill those needs, and so I, I think this has done a great job of really parsing down to what we need to do to advance our strategic priorities and express our values as a town. And if there's no other comment, I will make a motion. Do we have a motion written out already? Do we have a motion written out already? Or just make a motion to approve the budget? Period.
You write your motions close the hour period. Your town clerk put the motion recognition update on the table on the June 18th.
I make that motion. I make that motion as recommended. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Majority approves, motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Summers. And now we'll jump into our discussions for the evening. Knightdale Annual Housing Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to be before you tonight to provide a implementation update on the Affordable Knightdale Plan. The main focus is to go over the annual housing report. So this report was actually called for in the Affordable Knightdale Plan. The plan was adopted in March of 2024, so it was the tail end of last fiscal year. So instead of doing a report, we've sent out a memo with some of the items that had already been implemented and things that we were working on. So this year, we're actually publishing a report that focuses on what we've done in the last year, but also just for additional data, we did expand that timeframe. A lot of the data that is included in this report goes back to fiscal year 23. So fiscal year 23 through 25 kind of is the focus of this report. And if you recall, in the Affordable Knightdale Plan, the goal of this report is to report on key housing metrics, account for all of the town's spending on affordable housing, and then also to just provide a progress report on how we're implementing the recommendations of the plan. So tonight, my goal is to share some key kind of high level highlights of this plan or this report with you and then to actually publish it in the beginning of July. That would allow for us to finish out the fiscal year. I do foresee some of these numbers that are in here changing because we have one more month left to go. So that's why it wasn't printed out or distributed. So it is kind of in a draft format right now and then it will give us the opportunity to update those numbers and then we'll have it pushed out in the beginning of July. So the format tonight for going through or the format of the report is it provides an introduction to what the report is for, and then it provides a brief overview of the Affordable Knightdale Plan, talks about the different recommendations that came out of that plan. It provides a community profile. And then we go through each of the four large categories, implementation, four large recommendation categories and how each of those items have seen either accomplishments or some sort of implementation and then ends with some closing remarks. So first up is the overview of the Affordable Knightdale Plan. As you all are aware, this was adopted in March of 2024. We partnered with UNCG on it and the focus of it wasn't just affordable housing, it really was Affordable Knightdale, making sure that we are building and encouraging an inclusive, livable town overall. So there are four broad categories that came out of the plan and within those four categories, there are 12 recommendations. So as I mentioned, the report starts with funding and then works its way through each of the large categories. Next up is the community profile. These are some data points that we thought were really good indicators of housing status in Knightdale. I'm not going to go over all of the numbers, but just wanted to highlight the housing units. This bar graph or line graph on the left-hand side of the screen looks at the last five years of single family homes, the actual number of existing units in Knightdale. So ones that have been built or on the ground are inhabited. And the single family includes both detached homes and townhomes. And then the multifamily is in the blue line and you can see it kind of is a gradual, stable increase over the years. However, based on the number of approved units that are in the development pipeline, we do foresee in the coming years, kind of there's going to be more of a drastic upswing or an upward trend in these numbers and the number of actual housing units that are, that are in Knightdale. And then median household income, just wanted to highlight that actually increased quite a bit in the recent comprehensive plan update. That number was presented at 79,000. So I was happy to see that that income level has gone up. And then median home sales price, can't recall the exact number, but there has been a shift downward in that as well. So that brings us to our first overall category, our funding implementation. So within this category, there is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the land acquisition policy were two recommendations that fell under this. First up, this will mainly focus on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund aspect of this recommendation. The developer contributions, in April of this year, the Parkside at Westlake development was approved and as part of the rezoning, the developer offered to make contributions into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so over the lifetime of that project, it will be just over $110,000 put into that trust fund. And then that's something that the town can look at and kind of use our discretion to fund other projects and kind of put it back into the affordable housing realm. And then the town contributions in the orange box, I'm actually going to skip that for now and come back to it at the end of my presentation. That brings us next to the process category. There are three different recommendations that fall under this. We have not really seen any changes or implementation to the housing advisory board. So these updates really focus on capacity building and community engagement and also zoning incentives. So starting off with capacity building and community engagement, the green box on the left-hand side talks about three different recommendations or aspects of the plan that we've made progress on. First up is the annual report. That's what I'm presenting on. So we have successfully started that and our goal is to, or our intent is to have this be an annual publication. Next up is the Housing Resource Center. This is something that Development Services staff is actively working on to create a digital resource on our website, doing a lot of research, seeing what other municipalities have put out there. And that is something that should be up and available, not by this, end of this fiscal year, but in the beginning of the next fiscal year. And then last is partnerships. The plan really focuses on building relationships with Wake County and their housing affordability and community revitalization department. So over the last year and a half, census plan was adopted. We've been working on those opportunities, growing those relationships, meeting with Wake County. So we'll continue to do that as well. And then under the zoning incentives category, this really focuses on the missing middle type of housing product, which is defined as being between a single family detached home and a mid to high-rise apartment building. So I have two graphs for you with some data. The top one is between fiscal year 23 and 25. It shows the number of approved units and the different categories. So you can see there is a lot of single family detached homes being approved, but there is a significant amount of townhomes and actually some duplexes as well, which is something we have not seen approved in a very long time. And then the graph on the bottom shows the actual delivered units. So these are housing units that have actually received their certificate of occupancy. So the, they're still predominantly single family detached and multifamily being delivered to the market, but as you can see in the top, there are a lot of units in the pipeline. So those numbers will change. Based on the amount or the units that have been delivered, 17% of them would be categorized as missing middle. So, but if you look at the top graph, almost 30%, 29 and a half is what would be classified as missing middle. So those numbers are going to shift. But the Affordable Knightdale Plan does recommend reviewing the UDO for opportunities to expand missing middle units and housing types. So that could be looking at different regulations for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage courts. So that's just something to keep in mind. And then the last element under process would be accessory dwelling units. We did a text amendment last year where the process for ADUs was changed. Instead of being a special use permit, they're allowed by right. We have only seen census change was made to the ordinance, only one building permit issued for the construction of a accessory dwelling unit. We do get a lot of inquiries. We answer a lot of questions, but we have only seen one, but that will likely change and increase. Next up is the subsidy implementation. This, under this category is gap financing, development partnerships and direct assistance. This particular page of the report really focuses on development partnerships. So up top, the Raleigh Rescue Mission. Some of you were at the recent groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago for the garden, which was formerly known as Project Hope. So the town continues to be a partner on that project. They had some tight construction timeline, so we were allowed, or we were able to release their building permits early, which really helped to get that started. And so we also will continue to work with them and evaluate additional opportunities where we can support the project. Next up is our development partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Flowers Place is wrapping up. It's a 17 lot subdivision. They have one more home that needs a certificate of occupancy. And last year, the town agreed to taking over their stormwater, stormwater pond after it was completed. So that's something we're still working with Habitat on. But ultimately, the town maintaining that will help HOA dues be reduced, which helps in the, for the development to remain affordable. And then last up, Northside Compassion Project. I'm not going to say too much about this because you'll actually hear more about it in the development update from Gideon, but the Northside Compassion Project did have a duplex over on Maple Street. Unfortunately, in the past year, it had to be demolished due to some issues. So they have been working with us to see what opportunities there are to rebuild. And so this presents another opportunity for the town to support them. So we'll continue to work with them on that. Last up is the demonstration category and within that falls the expanded housing options, mixed income focus, permanent affordability and inclusive livable environment. So first want to start with expanded housing options. Took the opportunity to highlight Linden Oaks, which was approved in July of last year. Their rezoning and master plan really spoke to how they were achieving goals of the Affordable Knightdale Plan. They have a variety of housing types, different lot sizes, included duplexes, and they really did a good job of intermixing all those product types instead of having them in pods. And then they also introduced a smaller footprint home ranging from somewhere 800, 1,000 square feet. So there are a lot of different housing products and types and lot sizes within that development. So as that gets going, it really helps achieve that expanded housing options category. And that leads into mixed income housing. There's kind of two ways to look at mixed income housing. The first one is highlighted in the blue box. It talks about having subsidized housing and market, market rate housing in the same development. So in January of last year, the Mailman Post Development was approved and as part of their rezoning, they did include the dedication of 10 townhome units. That would be affordable rental units. And then the other aspect of mixed income housing would be to incorporate different types of varying house sizes, lot sizes that are at different price points within the same development as well. That way you get a, attract individuals and families of different incomes. So the green chart goes through and highlights all the residential developments that have been approved in the last three years and the variety of housing types that have been approved. So in the majority of them do include more than one. The average is 3.6. So if you round up each development that's been approved in the last three years, typically has four different housing prices or housing types in it. So that helps to look or achieve the mixed income housing recommendation. And then the last part of demonstration is the inclusive livable environment. So this is, we took the opportunity with this page to really look at what the town is doing, not just developers, on what we're doing to achieve this vision of having an inclusive and livable town. And so we highlight some of the town projects that have happened recently, the Mingo Creek Greenway Extension, the Knightdale Boulevard pedestrian improvements. There's some upcoming sidewalk installation on Old Night Road. The Route 33 service has been expanded and then we are also continuing to participate in the Northeast Area Smart Ride Program. So all of this, you know, really goes to show and demonstrate the town's commitment to having and being an inclusive, livable town. And then the report wraps up with kind of a recap of our volunteer workdays with Habitat for Humanity. Just shares some highlights and pictures from both workdays that we had in January of last year and then April of this year. I was able to participate in both and it was a very rewarding experience and I'm glad that the town was able to do that. So going back to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, there is an opportunity for the town to, to use the funds that were budgeted in last fiscal year. So there was $25,000 budgeted that went into our community development account. So we have been working with Habitat for Humanity. They have an established home repair program and we found out that there are three homes in Knightdale that could benefit from the town contributing our affordable trust fund dollars to the program. These particular repairs are a full roof repair and also two shower conversions. So as part of Habitat for Humanity's process, they do the vetting and eligibility. All of the homes that were selected fall within the 65% or less of the area median, median income. So, and then on the map, I just kind of gave a general idea of where these three homes are, kind of Mingo Creek area, Churchill, and then the Old Town Smithfield Road area. So after working with Habitat and talking with them and learning more about their program, staff thinks this is a good use of the trust fund dollars. And it would also allow, you know, if we're covering these expenses, it would allow Habitat for Humanity to do additional projects and spend more money with their home repair program. So tonight, we're actually looking for, asking for support and a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the minor home repair program contract with Habitat for Humanity. Also mentioned, so their application process does check eligibility, but with the way that the contract is set up, they would manage the contractors, the work, everything being done. It kind of is more of like a reimbursement, but they would manage the project. And this is something that could potentially grow in future years depending on funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, either about this contract or the report in general.
So does the contract have a dollar figure associated with it?
It has the 25,000, it has the full amount that was funded.
So, you know, I'm super thrilled with this plan, our housing inclusion, inclusive housing program as a, as just a true dynamic to add to Knightdale and our inclusive community. I know a large portion of what we had based the plan around was sort of leveraging of various resources. How well are you all tracking proposed cuts on the federal spend side from whether it's CDBG, home funds and things of that sort, as to how impactful it will be on some of the deliverables that was, the plan was looking at sort of capturing?
I'm not sure that I could speak very well to that. There's probably areas to kind of look into that further.
So on the trust fund item here, when we were kind of originally talking about this, I was in favor of maybe holding off, you know, letting it accumulate a little bit more and, you know, targeting some maybe larger projects. But learning more about the program, what Habitat's done to kind of, you know, vet the cases that this is and seeing what a huge difference it can make, you know, for three different households in the town of Knightdale, I fully support, you know, this idea of using this initial trust fund deposit in this way. Because I mean, these are three families that otherwise might not be able to stay in their homes here in Knightdale in these projects. And these projects make a huge difference in their lives. So I would absolutely be in favor of us doing this.
Yeah, assuming, assuming it's all checks out with, you know, the lawyers. I think it is an excellent way to try it out, to figure out how this works and what the pitfalls might be. And so I, I'd be in favor as well.
There's no further discussion on it. I'll motion, I'll go ahead on and motion to authorize the town manager to execute the minor home repair program contract with Habitat for Humanity of Wake County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Majority approves, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goodman. And thank you for the comments, all of the comments. And I had the same thought, so thank you for saying that and thinking initially wanted to see it grow. But now seeing this opportunity that we can actually help with what we have, I think it's a great opportunity, so.
Next is Development Services Update, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I won't be up here long. I'm just going to kind of kick us off and give some of our data points that we're tracking as far as development. And then I'll turn it over to Gideon to kind of get into some project specific details with you. So just to kind of recap where we stand, we're tracking over time our available lots, the number of units under construction, lots under construction, proposed units, approved units, and then the total possible units, just to give you an idea of the development pipeline, making sure we have a healthy pipeline as we move forward. I think the key thing to take out of this data, if you track it over time, is to really look at the second row there, which is residences under construction. If you look back in February, that number was well over a thousand, and now it's down to six forty-seven. That is due to the delivery of several multifamily apartment units. So the Elevate River View has several buildings that have received their COs. Village Gate off of Smithville Road has received a few buildings that got COs. And then last week, the first building at the lots at Knightdale Station, the one closest Knightdale Boulevard, received its temporary COs. So you'll start to see residents moving into those units. So it greatly and quickly reduced our number of residences under construction. But everything else in the pipeline seems fairly healthy. That's just kind of a lot of apartment units delivered in a short period of time, where you see that kind of drastic swing like that. And then tracking it over time, obviously much healthier than we were in twenty-twenty-one when there's forty-two. But you can see that number has gone up and then gone back down again. So that's kind of the only real trend you're seeing there with movement. But that's just the delivery of a lot of multifamily units in a singular year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gideon to talk about some project specifics and happy to answer any questions once he kind of gets through.
Good evening, council, here today, Mr. Manager. Thank you for joining us. My name is Gideon Smith, I'm senior planner at town of Knightdale. Through this presentation, we'll be going over some concept plans, listening to some feedback, or trying to gain feedback from y'all, give you some updates on how things are moving through the master plan project, then talk about some construction drawing updates. I'll turn it back over to Jason to close up for this section of tonight. So over the past couple of weeks, Kevin's been working with a developer that has approached us for a piece of property in between the Coports facility on Old Cruz Road and the Brio project on Old Cruz Road. So this property is about thirty acres in size, currently zoned rural transition. And what being proposed is a residential neighborhood, which would necessitate a rezoning. So before going into a little more, just want to look at the comp plan real quick. So looking at three map series, it's located within the primary growth area, indicating that it's ripe for development. Urban Small Town Framework, Framework Map provides limited information, but it looks to the Rural Preservation Corridor. And then finally, the Future Place type map is actually the Neighborhood Center. So just kind of having that in mind, you know, there's about a hundred and thirty residential lots being proposed, largely townhome that are reloaded, and then some reloaded single-family houses. You know, overall, we've looked at this, met with the developer, provided some initial feedback. But, but looking at the comprehensive plan, I think there's an opportunity for some, some non-residential in there to better align it, you know, potentially in that, that mixed-use feel. Another recommended improvement would be just overall connectivity to adjacent properties, adjacent developments that will be going under construction. And then, you know, further in the goals of the CTP through the Greenway Trail. So with that, happy to answer any questions. You know, we do have a little bit of limited information. But as you can see, all the colors on the bottom of the screen are indicate environmental features. So there's some floodplain and some other wetlands that are likely to limit the connectivity to the Brio project. However, whenever you're looking more to the eastern side of the site, yeah, there are environmental features. But it might be a easier chance to get connectivity through, through that way. The main spine road is a CTP road, so that's, that's called for. So that'd be a continuation from Old Mill Burney on the west side of Old Cruz Road. Pause there and ask for any feedback.
Is this the first time this project has come before us?
Yeah, yeah, we just received this, you know, not too long ago.
I remember we had one on Old Cruz where, because the green indicates, I'm assuming, the townhomes, right?
That's correct.
Okay, we had one, seemed like similar, maybe a year or so ago, with the townhomes that were budding back off of Cruz Road. I think there was a development berm that they were looking at, and I just didn't know if this was...
You might be thinking about Brio, which is, you know, immediately to the south, which isn't under construction yet.
Maybe that's where it is, where I'm thinking about where Brio has that alignment up on Cruz, so, okay.
And that's one thing the developer mentioned, you know, it's going to be separate from Brio, but they're trying to, you know, continue some of, you know, some of the things that, that development has, you know, proposed and committed to, to try to have some continuity along the roadway. Of course, we're going to, you know, try to see what other unique elements can be brought, you know, if they move forward. We'll move on. So Donna alluded to the Northside Compassion Project. They, this group has approached us, over the past couple of months, we've had more conversations with them recently. They provided this, this concept plan on the right-hand side. We, we reviewed it, you know, through our typical conceptual plan process, provided comments, and set up a meeting to talk with them. And I would say that they were rather taken aback with the, the level of comments that I gave them. And they would really like to see if there's a path forward to have a project that goes through a rezoning process that does not necessarily, you know, prepare plans to the master plan level. We, when I was talking to them, you know, we were highlighting all the potential, you know, code requirements that, you know, may be applicable. We talked about the rezoning process, the, you know, areas that they can ask for flexibility through town council and everything. And, you know, they kept on saying, well, this is an affordable project, you know, we, we would like to see some sort of partnership where there's more easier entry into getting, you know, some, some affordable units approved here, here in our downtown. So from staff's viewpoint, we have a ordinance that we're required to uphold and administer. So, you know, I let them know of what would be required and everything. But, you know, they, they just were rather disappointed that the process that we have is, is, you know, you know, is as lengthy as it is and it requires as much pre-planning. So I tried to explain the benefits of that, but of course, they, they were, you know, talking from the affordability lens and looking for ways to expedite this to, to help some families in need. So as Donna mentioned, there was that, I guess, the duplex on the corner there. So there were two units now that, you know, they're asking for eight units. You know, this, this requires a rezoning, we have our standard process. But really just happy to, to kind of hear, hear from y'all, see if you have any thoughts on, if we have a different path.
Is this the level of project that would bring about the improvement of Second Avenue right there, where we would be looking at sidewalk and stormwater infrastructure and things like that? I know there's been stormwater issues there in this location in the past.
Yeah, we, we mentioned that that would be a requirement and everything, and, you know, roadway improvements, that was a big, big barrier for, for this group. So seemed like they were, you know, not, not interested. You know, not, not saying poorly, not speaking poorly on them, but, you know, they're just, you know, not necessarily in the business of, of doing all of that. So, you know, we're looking at it from, from, you know, making sure that the future tenants have access to, you know, safe, safe, you know, routes and everything. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, upholding our ordinance and, you know, applying consistent regulations, but still trying to, you know, meet a goal of council by bringing these affordable units to town.
I know that with Flowers Place with the Habitat for Humanity, one of the ways that we partnered with them was on the, some of the public infrastructure improvements associated with the project. That'd be something that I would be certainly open to exploring here, looking at what that would be, what kind of cost estimates that encompasses.
And I would agree with that. I, I think that we could find ways to partner in that. I would be, although I know the goodwill intention on this, I would be very reluctant to become too lax in how we make provisions for organizations that are coming, you know, even though their, their mission is, is noble for affordable housing. I think that it starts to set precedence to where we will then have some bad actors that will act in a way that will be a little less than genuine than what some of these organizations are. But I agree, you know, with Council McDonald, that, you know, we will do what we can to help partner and find ways to get them to this level of development that we'd like to see and that we would hope to have other developers come in and do likewise. So just my thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree. I think one of the strengths of the Habitat project over there at Flowers Place was that our contributions allowed them to meet the other aspects of our UDO. You know, they built a product that, you know, met our standards, that, you know, is a long-term housing project that's high quality, it's going to stick around for a long time. Because we've had lots of conversations about, you know, obviously, this is a little bit different because it's not necessarily permanent housing. It's kind of, I know how they traditionally worked over there. But, you know, if it's, just because it's affordable doesn't mean that it's long-term affordable. And we want to see that quality build.
I've just mentioned, for the record, that the church and the compassion project are separate entities. I'm the treasurer for the church, not the compassion project. But I was sort of in the loop early on, this was like, going to be like twelve units, I thought. So they were really looking at stuff. So I would be interested to see, I get the point of that they want to have that easier, maybe on-ramp, but they've still got to plan it out. It, it, you know, it's got to get planned out so that there are those conditions to say, is this going to be affordable housing forever? Is this going to be short-term? You know, those details have to be worked out. There's just no way around that. Things like participation in infrastructure, those are conversations we'd be happy to have. Hopefully, they'll have it with staff, and then, you know, I can sort of be on the sideline.
And I think the question of, is this affordable housing, you know, that is something that someone purchases versus is this supportive housing, as it has traditionally been at the location, is another, an excellent question that needs to be answered. And does that get tied up in the rezoning, things like that?
But I would love to see an example of what a quadplex looks like on the ground, that would help. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, I'll relay that to them and keep you guys updated. Another one, another concept here on our southern extent. So you have Pool Road with Bethlehem on the left side of the screen and Smithfield Road on the right side of the screen. The purple is recently approved, Parkside at Westlake. The yellow hatch that says GR3 PUD is the approved Haven at Griffith Meadows. That was approved a couple of years ago by the town council. They're moving through construction drawings right now. What, I've been contacted, asked to, you know, see if, if there'd be any appetite for the town of Knightdale to consider working with a developer on, on these two properties. They're right outside the ETJ, they're within our Long Range Urban Service area. It would be built by the same builder and developer as the Haven at Griffith Meadows. They will be, the Haven will be accessing that greens sewer line. So I think there may be some thoughts there. But, so there's some interest by, interest by Meritage Homes in these two outlined parcels in yellow. I'll let them know that I would chat with y'all to see if, if we would be interested in, again, expanding the ETJ in this area. I don't have a concept yet. I was hoping to have something by noon today to share with you. I'll take feedback or, or not.
I don't have a whole lot of feedback. I mean, we knew it was coming. I think that the only feedback we can provide is that we'd have to see what their development plan looks like, right? I mean, it simply comes down to the type of project that they're proposing as to our appetite to, to entertain it further. But, you know, we had very high standards for Parkside. We are definitely going to be looking for very similar type of design or project scope for, for something of this type. But, yeah, I mean, we just have to see what they're proposing. That would be my thought.
And just to add, it's also a conservation subdivision. So you were mentioning, we'd like to see something similar to what Parkside at that level. So that's a conservation subdivision. You know, this, this would be a conservation subdivision by the comp plan, Hopkins Farm, which we'll talk in a minute. So there's a lot of conservation subdivisions called for in the comp plan in this area. But again, the bigger question is...
Not all conservation subdivisions are the same, we know that. So, yeah, once again, like I said, I'd have to see a little bit more of a plan design.
Follow-up question, can we go back to the map before? I know over there to the right on the image, we've got a couple of neighborhoods that are in the county jurisdiction and are operating off of like sewer package plants and things like that. Is this an area, the proposed area here, is that an area that could, if they decided to develop at county standards, could feed into the existing sewer package plants there? I don't, like, I'm asked, I know it's a complicated question. Is it gravity-fed where it would work, where they could easily connect over there? Or is there a block where they can't? You know, this land hasn't developed previously, so is it because they can't gravity-feed the sewer over to the package plants? And so we don't have to, there's a higher bar for development under the county standard in that direction, or?
But you're not asking if the existing developments with package plants could connect to sewer?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
You're asking if this developer could facilitate that?
Yeah, no, 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 I'm saying, so if we, if we said, no, we're not interested. Is it where...
What's the alternative?
Could they gravity-feed over and, you know, build more neighborhoods that are similar to what is there? Looking at the trade-offs of entertaining the conversation versus shutting it down.
All right, well, I will try to get a plan before bringing this back before y'all. But thank you for the time, just to give you a heads up, something might else be coming down here. So moving into master plan stage, a lot of this is just more informational, but of course, I value your feedback, so please share whenever you are ready. Old Face and Place, this was joint public hearing back in March. It took a brief pause to consider the feedback that was heard there. And they resubmitted last week this revised master plan. So overall, they, they've added an additional twelve detached single-family lots. So now there would be thirty-foot wide, thirty-five-foot wide, and sixty-five-foot wide lots for single-family detachment. And then they removed eleven townhomes. So just to kind of, I'll step over here real quick, just to, this right here, these are all single-family now, so they, you know, they were able to take a couple out, remove some townhomes. There's discussion about, you know, making sure that some homes, you know, they were... Um, there's discussion about, you know, making sure that, um, some homes, you know, there was a place making on Mingo Bluff Boulevard. Um, so they were, uh, they, they provide some renderings and some other considerations, um, you know, for, for those rows of townhomes. Um, you know, it'd be your typical three-story, but then at the end on that, um, Mingo Bluff Boulevard, they would front it, look more like a, a single-family home. Um, so, you know, they're thinking about proposing that all along the, uh, Mingo Bluff Boulevard. Um, they've changed, you know, talked about the lot variety, we're still working with them to try to embrace the river district some more. Um, but, uh, they've submitted the revisions, so we're planning on taking this to, to LRB next Monday, um, for them to formulate their recommendation. Um, and then this would come back to town council for final decision in July.
Is, I'm seeing on the map a road connection. Has that been secured?
No. For other mention. So they, they said that they still have not been able to come up to an agreement with, with the Narans. Um, however, they've showed that they could construct the road there, so they checked that box. Um, but it, it sounds like the conversations are still unfruitful. And they're still willing to construct a road if the right-of-way is acquired.
I would strongly suggest they acquire the right-of-way. It is very, 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 very important.
Understood.
Yeah, I would say I'm lukewarm on, I, it was an improvement.
Maybe at least in the visual aspects of it, I'm still lukewarm. There are some other changes, you know, I'm not going to go into it all, but there's still room for improvement, I definitely hear that. Um, so I'll still keep working with them and then we'll, uh, see what it looks like in July. Hopkins Farm, you have seen sketches of this, uh, has just recently moved into the master plan phase. Uh, D R C was held, um, mid-May, uh, had some pretty good discussions. Uh, so what you see on, on the right-hand side is, is the, the layout that's likely going to be proposed, um, come mid-July, whenever this goes into the joint public hearing. Um, so, uh, some of the discussion we had was, you know, again, this is a conservation subdivision, you know, they're requesting masquerading, um, across, you know, most of the sites. So, you know, we're still, you know, not, not certain that masquerading is the appropriate, uh, way to develop in, in these, um, types of, uh, place types. So, you know, development services staff, we've been, um, engaging with, with other, um, private entities that, uh, you know, actually focus on conservation and, um, tree planting and looking at different ways, um, to work with planting new materials to, you know, maybe, um, bring back new vegetation quicker or, or make more meaningful reestablishments of, of vegetation. Uh, one thing they mentioned was, you know, after folks masquerade, maybe they, um, do more, more soil amendments to, to make the actual soil, the top lift of that soil, you know, more nutrient-rich and everything, rather than just, just leaving it as, you know, what, if, if there's clays out there, um, you know, just kind of leaving it, you know, for the home, homeowner, um, in the future. Um, just some way, you know, masquerading, scraping all that original soil, you know, there's thousands of years of, you know, deposition and then, you know, the masquerade just, uh, takes it all away. So just, just kind of looking, um, for ways to, to bring some unique things to the town. Of course, green stormwater infrastructure, um, then that, um, north-south road is, is a, you know, pretty straight, uh, except for the roundabout there. So just looking for additional ways to do traffic calming, you know, whether it be stamped concrete, um, you know, different intersection designs. So continue working with them, um, but anticipate that, uh, mid-July coming for a joint public hearing.
Does that say presumed wetland?
It does. So there's, there's a pond there right now and what their intentions are to, to drain it and allow it to, you know, reestablish, uh, as, as a natural feature, um, and then, you know, potentially incorporate into open spaces. So, you know, we're hearing a lot about these, these existing ponds, they just can't, you know, you know, remain through, through new development and everything. So, uh, seems like they, they've identified that. Um, yeah.
Like the pond that's currently there is a man-made pond, like a cattle pond or something like that?
Yeah.
Help me remember, at one point, I know we had discussed, if a developer had a request for masquerading, that we could, that we would look at that as a consideration as long as they're replanting, they went with a larger tree, shrub, whatever. Did we ever implement that or was that just something that we were allowing the developers to sort of propose on their own in regards to the masquerading?
I think that came out of Parkside at Westlake. Uh, I know you've been mentioning a lot, you know, trying to get larger caliper trees. Uh, I've been, you know, asking for that too. Um, it's not in, in the U D O, so, you know, they would, by code would be required to plant, you know, the two-inch caliper street tree. However, through the rezoning, you know, there could be a condition of approval that, you know, the street trees are a three-inch caliper or something larger.
Yeah. I mean, you know, and I, I get it, right? I understand the optics, I understand the impact of masquerading, but also, you know, someone who's living in a community that was not masqueraded and dealing with storm runoff and water issues from four or five homes uphill for me and, you know, things of that nature. I also recognize that, you know, masquerading is oftentimes used to mitigate a lot of those issues regarding water runoff and displacement and things of that sort. Uh, I, I think that's something that definitely we need to take and look at maybe a little bit more, uh, in terms of the focus of how that can be, um, you know, aligned where masquerading is allowed, but the requirement of replacement is like you say, either through a sort of soil remediation or through, you know, larger, um, plantings or something of that sort to help, you know, bring that, that, that area back to, um, a more vibrant state quicker. It's definitely something to be explored further.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we will chat more about that in July. Next, Clifford Road Residential, this should be rather fresh on your mind, just had a joint public hearing, uh, here recently. Uh, this plan is, is the same as what you saw. Um, this will be going to, uh, LRB on Monday as well. We expect a revised master plan over the coming days to be presented to the LRB. Um, so, uh, I think what was discussed or heard at the, uh, joint public hearing were some, uh, wider single-family lots around the perimeter, uh, you know, more of a, a housing variety. I think there was some interest in the cottage court and, and, you know, learning more about that and, you know, understanding how, you know, those open spaces interact with those homes. Um, and then just additional off-street or off-site pedestrian connectivity to, um, existing neighborhoods in vicinity. Terravita, I've been working with them. Uh, they still have not submitted anything. They were also in the March twentieth, the joint public hearing with Old Face in Place. Um, what I'm anticipating is a July or August LRB meeting. I'm hoping that, you know, not too much more, more time lapses before going back to LRB. Um, however, I have met with this group several times. I, I've seen some, some concepts, some, some changes, um, that, you know, you could tell that, you know, things were being heard from, from joint public hearing. Um, but I've only seen a, a concept of the change, so until it's officially submitted, uh, you know, we'll kind of just wait to hear from there. But I've heard good things about potentially making roadway improvements to, to Bobbitt, um, from where they are, um, proposing to connect to and then just trying to figure out what level of commitment on, on, uh, Quiet Oaks on the other side. Getting close here, so the collection, uh, this is a project that was approved several years ago. Uh, at the time, a, a builder was, was not identified. So through the PUD process, of course, uh, you know, there were architectural, um, standards that were committed to. Uh, recently, a new builder has approached a town, Roebuck Homes. Um, they've been really looking into the approved PUD, uh, the architectural standards, the, the site layout and everything, and really evaluating whether or not, you know, they would feel comfortable, uh, you know, purchasing, um, the collection and, and being the builder in that. Um, so, uh, they've provided some, uh, examples of, of kind of the level of, of building that they do and they are interested in bringing, um, to the town. Um, so these are just a variety of their single-family. Uh, of course, that development will have, um, some townhome units too. Um, but just wanted to bring this to you, let you know that, um, as they were evaluating it, see if they were the right fit for the, for the property, uh, they identified some changes or needed changes to the site plan. So just wanted to run it by y'all. Um, I feel that these are, uh, minor enough that this could be, uh, taken care of at the administrative level without the need for a PUD amendment. However, I enjoy conversing with y'all, getting your feedback and making sure that I'm on the right page. Um, so on the left, Bill, I'm going to step up right next to you. On the left, you have the approved plan, um, with this pocket park in the center, these townhome units and then radiating drive on that, you know, some rear, rear, uh, loaded, uh, single families in the front loaded. Um, the little crescent, that's the C P P road, we've got Robertson, Peter, Keith over here, railroad, A S B park, um, to the left. So the two biggest changes that are being proposed here, um, you'll see that this pocket park has been shifted over, um, and those townhome units were moved, um, to, to be fronted along the Robertson. Uh, you know, uh, it's going to be, you know, more travel corridor than, than the local roads. Um, so, uh, the, the Roebuck Homes developer and builder, you know, felt that this would serve to provide a better transition from a, from a higher, uh, road classification into the neighborhood. Um, and really with that shift, let me pause. So, overall, the number of units is going to be reduced. So there are ninety-seven homes that are approved right now. They're proposing to lose six units as a result of moving around this pocket park and trying to site these homes in a different location to, to give the, the future buyer a better, um, living experience. They've also expanded the size of this pocket park and added additional other recreational opportunities, um, throughout. So, you know, moving the pocket park, uh, you know, they've mentioned that consolidating active and passive open spaces in this situation may actually lead to, um, better use of the area. Um, you know, they, they were saying that, uh, sometimes if there's, you know, just some passive space off, off in there, people may not feel like they should be there. Um, so, you know, by putting, um, the active space right next door to it, it might encourage them to embrace that, those natural features and everything. Um, you know, they'd be willing to, you know, put a, a trail through that passive area, um, and make sure there's connection to this, uh, pocket park. Another thing I'll note is that there were some significant retaining walls necessary, um, to kind of support the, uh, S C Ms and everything, so, you know, there'd be, there'd be some tall walls there. But with the shifting of this pocket park, it allows for, for a different, um, grading and different type of development where they can, um, have less, you know, less expensive wall or less the need for, uh, walls. So then you have more of adhesive, um, you know, whether it's a passive or, or recreation. Um, additional, um, yes, parking was added throughout, better distributed. So, you know, the way I look at it is they, they looked at what was approved and, uh, looked at what they could deliver, uh, and, and felt that there were other ways to, to add open spaces and other, you know, unique, uh, elements to, to really set this, um, project aside. Um, again, density is, is actually going down. Um, you know, it, it seems like they're, they're more focused on, on a quality development and building community rather than, uh, number of units and lot yield. Um, they're adding additional pedestrian connectivity to that pond in the, um, top-right and connecting all the way down to, to Robertson. So, um, overall, I, I think that this is not a major deviation that would necessitate a PUD amendment. But take your comments.
So I voted on this when I was on LRB in 2019. And then this was the first development case that we heard when I got elected. Uh, so I voted on it on LRB in 2019 and then voted on it on council and at the December 2019 meeting. So this one's been hanging around for a long time. Uh, I don't see anything here that would cause me any concern handling this administratively, but a lot has changed over in this section since this was approved. And so one of the things I'm like vaguely remembering and I can't tell for sure on this map is, does this provide a sidewalk connection on Robertson that would connect over to the new Robertson Crossing development where we also have a pedestrian crossing plan across the train tracks?
Yeah.
Cause it seems to stop at the lake.
Yeah.
Vaguely remembering.
Yeah. So what is, what is shown here, there are, you know, these, these features here and I, I believe there is, there's been some, who's gonna, who's gonna make those improvements in, in this area, is it Robertson, is it, is it the collection? So, you know, what was approved, but they're still showing is, is the sidewalk along Robertson, you know, they're showing it on, on Keith or side path on, on Keith. Um, so like also with this, this was before the, the new C P P, so these were actually larger right-of-ways, so they're, they're requested, you know, be allowed to, you know, do a little road die coming and applying to our current C P P. So, you know, we'll definitely be talking with them, making sure, um, that, you know, if there's a fee and lieu needed or, or whatever needs to be done to make sure that we don't have a, a gap whenever these two developments come in, uh, you know, I think we'll be able to make sure that's taken care of.
For sure. I think the architectural renderings looked right in line with what we were hoping for. I don't see anything here that causes concern, just kind of more of that overarching concern about connectivity with the new developments that have been approved since this one.
I agree with the connectivity, even if it has to be creative, you know, greenway connective. Um, and I appreciate that they seem to care. So that's great.
I remember this one had some small, unique differences. Um, I think it was even in like the parking and how the driveway was set up in certain ones and are they going to do the same thing with tho, with those things as well?
So I think, I think on some of the single-family, on the rear-loaded, they, they had the home and then like a courtyard lot and then they maybe had a detached home with, with a driveway in front, maybe an extended. I wish I had the, the graphic they had in the PUD. But yeah, so, so they've been looking at that and, you know, they've been looking at driveway lanes and making sure that, you know, what, what's be, what was approved is, is still achievable. Um, so, uh, I wish I would have included that, um, that graphic, but, but there, they are really looking at, you know, creating the livable outdoor space, you know, on these lots, even though they're smaller.
Yeah, cause I know when they sho, I just remember when they were showing us those images, it was really neat, cause I don't think anybody else had done something like that. And so I was just curious on we, if we were still going to be able to get that.
Yeah, I think so, cause they, they pulled it out and said, hey, we, we like seeing, we like what was already in there and they just want to make sure, cause there were some, you know, some driveway lanes and everything, um, but I'm confident that we can work it out at staff level. We'll provide updates whenever, if that kicks off and gets moving. Next one, this map is, is very pretty. Uh, what it is showing is, is Wide Waters Parkway. So at the very top in the dark green is Wide Waters and there's been a long-term vision for Wide Waters to connect all the way down, uh, over to the Bethlehem Road. Um, so I worked with Linden Oaks and Wake County on street names and everything and Wake County came back and said, you know, if, if the town wants Wide Waters Parkway to go from Knightdale Boulevard all the way to, uh, Bethlehem Road, we're going to run out of address points and that's not necessarily going to be possible. So give you a little bit more meaningful graphic here. So we have three, oh, two confirmed approved developments, uh, Creekview Crossing at the north. Um, they're still working on their, uh, construction drawings, um, but they would be constructing that first northern, um, leg. And then in the colorful, that's a concept, uh, that I think you guys saw maybe once, you know, super preliminary. Um, and then there's a small, um, gap with the Shady Acres Mobile Home Park and then the Linden Oaks development. So pretty much what Wake County's told us is that we have enough Wide Waters addresses to pretty much get this to turn around without. Otherwise, these home- Otherwise, these homes, there are not enough address points to make that work based on the naming system. So been working with Wake County and the developer, you know, looking at the names out there and what may be appropriate to a crosscut place right on the east side of Bethlehem Road, the developer would be constructing a roundabout. There, we confirmed with Wake County that there would be enough address points to go crosscut place from, from there all the way up to Old Face and Road. So, you know, Development Services feels that that is, is okay, but we'd like to hear from y'all. I know it's been your, your vision, it's been a priority to make that major connection, you know, Wide Waters all the way through, just identified a barrier.
What about wider waters?
I don't, I don't think fire would like that. So.
Clearly it says, we're more, we're more focused on getting the connection. What is called doesn't matter.
Yeah, it is much more about the connection, even if it were, you know, a turn and a quick, another turn and then you renamed. I mean, it's the, it's the connectivity.
And we'll make sure it's named properly so emergency services can get there, mail can get delivered and everyone's happy.
Yes, we also want fire to be able to find them if they need to.
Yeah. Although that, the alignment up there on that north end where the pictures are.
So that, that might be neat, but that's definitely, whenever I was putting this together, I was like, we got conversations to have. You know, understanding the colored pencil in the center is, is less defined as the CAD drawing, but it's glaring.
Good spot for a name change.
But yeah, we'll, we'll continue that conversation.
I mean, could we possibly do north and south wide waters? Mm-mm.
They don't really do that anymore. All right, we'll keep you updated. Public art. So Ample Storage Phase Three received approval end of last year. One of the required, one of the committed to conditions would be that they'd install some artwork along Boulevard. And the owner of Ample Storage found these bronze horses and fell in love with them, said he's gotta have them, bought them. And I just wanted to really just let you guys know or see, I know we're still trying to figure out what public art is and with the, you know, Arts Council and that, that relationship. So at this point, the zoning condition says that, you know, Development Services staff shall approve it. But wanted to get your feedback. It's right next to the quarry. You know, apparently there were some horses there in the past, so that I, I feel that there's some, some tie there, but this was brought to Development Services. And this is what they'd like to have out on Nightdale Boulevard. But if this is not the vision of what we'd like to see, then just like to be able to give them some feedback or direction, because he's gotta go to the stable.
Well, I mean, you know, I think compared to some of the art that I have seen, sort of our portal out on Nightdale Boulevard from the apartments out there, the time portal or whatever, I think that art is very interpretive. I don't have a problem with the horses. I actually think that, you know, hey, they, they are within fit for the fact that there were once horses out in that area. So I don't think that it's a big deal for me. You think it's a big deal?
I know, I don't think it's a big, I think seeing them on Grandma's front porch is funny.
They weren't, they weren't, they were acting out, so they had to get put away for a little while.
I mean, certainly they're bronze horses, so I know, you know, we've got the painted cows. I mean, we could certainly have some painted horses. Put a Nightdale K on them, Bill. Have an Instagrammable moment.
What about Dale the Knight?
Hey, we could put him out there too. Put some saddles on him. Collaboration. All right.
And if they come up with anything else?
Right, well, I mean, you know, maybe they could give them some context other than just two horses out and, you know, up on the roof or whatever.
All right, thanks. With that, I appreciate your time tonight. And I'll turn it back over to Jason.
Gideon, before you go, congratulations on the new face.
Take that as a compliment.
All right, thanks again, Mayor, Council. So I have a quick construction level update for you. So I'm sure you're all wondering and scratching your head, where is Union Park? So this is the concept name for Downtown North. And so the developer has come to us and based on having a residential development, they wanted to do something a little bit different or a little bit more harmonious with the neighborhood than maybe Downtown North. And so they chose the name Union Park because of the location between the two parks, Harbor Park and Nightdale Station Park, that's gonna serve as the union place between them. And so this will come to you as a, so normally with subdivisions, we bring a resolution that goes on the consent agenda for subdivision names and street names, and that is kind of told to us through the UDO. In this case, it's really interesting is they don't need to come for any street names because they're just extending all the streets in Old Town and so all the streets are already named. So we will bring a subdivision name only to you and didn't want it to be a shock. So it'll be Union Park for this neighborhood. And then they've provided us some precedent imagery of some of their signage and other things they wanna do. Part of that is kinda, they really wanna make sure we're in good with what they're doing. Part of that is also a clause that we put into the development agreement on this was that the town could choose to participate in things like street scape improvements, public art improvements, et cetera. And so what you see on the bottom is a concept they have as part of their signage. They're gonna be building a retaining wall along Smithfield Road at Main Street that'll have some townhomes adjacent to it. And they wanna use a portion of that to have the name of the subdivision, but there is an opportunity potentially to do some more extensive public art than they otherwise probably could do. And with our annual allotment for public art funding, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to maybe potentially participate with them. We have the ability to do so through the development agreement and what that gives us in turn is ability to kinda say, we like what you're showing us here, we definitely want this, not, you know, something less expensive or less meaningful. And then when we get into like timing and phasing and things like that, we are now a participating partner. So we get a little bit more say in how things are going, which as you can see from this, they're already being a pretty good partner as far as sharing information. So just wanted to put that on your radar. Again, this is likely what you see along that retaining wall on Smithfield Road. It'll be, and potentially a partnership with the town as well.
I think that'd be a great opportunity, especially along that location. There's a lot of examples of, you know, public art that's also like pedestrian level lighting. That'd be a great opportunity to do something like that in addition to some of the stuff we're seeing here.
The other part of this is a potential change to the development project. So this is kind of all new to me as of Friday, so I don't have a lot of information, but I do wanna bring it before you. As you recall, when this was approved, one of the unit types that they suggested were two-over-two condo units. So it's also called a stacked townhome. So the bottom unit, bottom two floors is one unit and then the top two floors are another unit. And they build them kind of like townhomes as attached units. They are doing several of them from this builder in Wake Forest. And what they found in Wake Forest, it didn't provide quite the affordability they hope, which affects the marketability of two-over-two condo in, in these locations. And so what they are proposing is potentially to replace the two-over-twos, which are represented by the blocks with the yellow dots on the bottom, with just multifamily units. I think it's a total of 108 units and associated parking that would take up similarly the same space. These would not be built by Stanley Martin, who's the current builder of the project. It would be another multifamily developer to come in and purchase that section and build it. If this was to be approved, this is likely going to require them to come back through for a rezoning, at least for this portion of the property, so that we can kind of understand a little bit more about it. But also it's a drastic change of, from the approved condo unit. So wanted to put that on your radar. Haven't seen anything formal yet other than this, but wanted to make you aware of it in case we need to move it forward as a potential reason, part of a reason. If you have any feedback, would love to give it to you.
I love the two-over-twos. But if they submit something different, I mean, we'll consider obviously, but I love the two-over-twos.
So when we say they didn't deliver the affordability in Wake Forest, what, what do you mean there? Because affordability is not really what we're going for.
Right, so I think in their mind, they would be a lower price point. So when you actually put in the construction cost, the land cost and everything, the, the price point is higher than what they had originally anticipated in this market. So, you know, the bottom unit, I, I think if y'all recall the public hearing, they were saying that's gonna be like your really affordable unit. I think in Wake Forest, the bottom units are, let's say anywhere from 350 to 380, $380,000. So you're competing with, you know, a three-story townhome as far as a price point for a two-over-two condo unit. And I just think it affects the marketability. Again, I didn't fact check them on any of it, but that, that's kind of what I understand. It's just the cost escalating didn't, the market and the price don't correspond that well.
And then not wanting to be the one to test the market.
Right. So we had that discussion that's, at a staff level at least, I mean, if they do multifamily units, obviously the town wouldn't be able to kinda dictate ownership versus rental, but it would, you know, certainly something that's not in the marketplace currently, potentially a conversation to have for sure and see what they, what they're thinking there. And then, yeah, this is the start of the, the conversation here.
So when, so when we say multifamily, we're not ruling out individually owned condo units. We're saying not two-over-two, the specific product.
Correct.
They could still build condos for individual ownership.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the intent of this proposal, but I'd have to clarify, but yes, they could still do that.
Because one of the attractions here was this is a new home type to the town of Nightdale. It's a big selling point on the development, I think, for most of us. And so, I mean, like multi, you know, multifamily apartments, we have, multifamily condo, we do not.
All right. The last thing I have for you real quick is just a recent project update. So got several things under CD review right now. The Brio Age Restricted has come in, which is off of Buffalo Road. Linden Oaks has moved to construction drawings. The Haven at Griffiths Meadow and Lockhart Elementary School rebuild are all under review. Upcoming items of note, Boulder Ridge is gonna have a neighborhood meeting. That's Alt, Phazon and Hodge, multifamily proposal there. That would be kind of two separate multifamily developments. And then Robertson Crossing is gonna bring their development agreement and annexation to you in June for approval. So that's what I have for you. I know Donna has a real quick slide on the ZTA, so I'm gonna let her come up here, but happy to answer any questions you have for me.
One more, going back to the condos. You know, we talked about kind of that price point. I, I mean, can we, like, wouldn't you just make them nicer? Like to deliver the, like, we need luxury housing in different parts as well. So I'm not opposed to them.
Right.
The higher price point, you know, make them as nice as you need to, to justify the product, I guess is what I'm saying.
I, I'm not 100% sure, I have to be honest with you. I'm like the telephone game here, so Kevin had the conversation with them and then I had the conversation with Kevin as far as that. And I don't know what all I'm intel on the, on the conversation. My understanding it was something about the price point and the marketability was what caused the, the movement away from the two-over-two condo units.
Right, because I guess my, my point was if we're designing it to compete with $350,000 townhomes, maybe we should design it to compete with a different product so that it is a nicer level product. Because people who can afford a $400,000, $500,000 condo unit are gonna buy a house somewhere anyways. And so that's an important piece of the affordable housing stuff as well, is we're not squeezing the market down, we're providing those options up as well.
That's a good point. They are buying million-dollar condos. So if you're gonna pay a million dollars, maybe you'll buy these condos.
All right.
Good evening again. This item should hopefully be very quick. As you recall, last month, we had a joint public hearing on the zoning text amendment. I am preparing my staff reports to go to the Land Use Review Board next week and then come back to you all at your June meeting. So I just wanted to get some clarification. There was a lot of discussion on this item. I wanna make sure I'm going in the right direction. Kind of the meeting or the joint public hearing ended with the direction to go with the current state maximum. So just wanted clarification, is that the current state maximum of 10? Or is it just general alignment with the state, which would then allow the UDO to fluctuate? And if the state increased, we wouldn't necessarily have to go through another text amendment? So just kinda getting that clarification point so I can make those changes.
So I, I believe I was more in line with us going with the state standards because it still has, I guess, sort of safeguards in there. It's based on square footage and things of that sort anyway. And by sticking with state standards, then it doesn't require, like you said, if there is a change in the state standards and our UDO is not meeting to that level, now we have to come back and revisit. I think that it just provides greater clarification. And per my understanding, most of the municipalities were aligned with state standards in terms of that, that mix, correct?
I did get some additional information after the numbers that I presented to you at the joint public hearing. There are actually quite a few municipalities, their ordinance says one thing, but they are actually following the new state regulations for nine or 10 children. So the majority of them, I don't know if they're actively working on kind of lining that up, but I've had some conversations and so doing it following state guidelines kind of does line us up with other municipalities. There are still some who have lower numbers, but the majority are following the new guidelines.
And those state standards apply to both children and adults, correct? There was two different standards that were, yeah.
I think, I think when we looked them up, the adults were 16, but they still had that same square footage.
Right, square footage and, yeah, yeah.
There are still plenty of, I don't wanna say safeguards in place. The state regulates a slew of different aspects. The town's really just looking at that max number. So whether it's children or adults, the state is kind of setting, it could be much lower depending on square footage, age of children, not sure about age of adults, but just, you know, there are different parameters that the state would follow. They just would never exceed what we said unless we just generally say follow the state and then our number could fluctuate. And if it ever becomes a problem, it's always something that we could revisit in a text amendment to put a, a lower number, but, but, so.
Okay, and adding to the adjustments, just to add a quick comment, I thought it was very interesting in the last Hunt Institute program, this is what we talked about. And there was a woman that was sharing with us that she advocated for the state to increase the number to 10. So currently, right now, what she's doing is doing exactly this, going to municipalities and advocating that they increase their numbers. So what she shared with me as we're looking at other municipalities, a lot of them are not even aware. So if we're looking at the numbers and they haven't adjusted, most of them aren't aware that this has even happened to even adjust their numbers, but a lot of them are adjusting. And so she's trying to share that message, so just as you said, it seemed like some are doing it, but they haven't changed. They're in the process because this is fairly new. So just wanted to add that.
And, and my intention was also adjusting to just follow the state standards.
Great, I'll proceed that way. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. So now, Hodge Road land mitigation, Mr. Tripp.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I promise I'm not gonna keep you more than about 45, 50 more minutes. We'll get through this. So Hodge Road DOT land or mitigation land update. This is an item, you spoke earlier about strategic priorities. This is one of our strategic priority focuses, is trying to establish a park on the, in the Hodge Road. our strategic priority focuses, is trying to establish a park on the, in the Hodge Road area on some D O T owned mitigation land. Familiarize, I wanted to familiarize everybody with the land. It's shown, I've got two different maps. It's the highlighted in green on the left and the pink on the right. You can see the development is starting to really fill in around these parcels. And this is, this is land that was dedicated by the N C D O T as conservation land to offset the building of the 64 bypass, which is now known affectionately as I-87. It's about 190 acres of mitigation land to offset those wetland impacts. It was deeded in 2001. We've had prior discussions with D O T and amongst ourselves about converting, approaching D O T to convert this to a public park. Their restoration and conservation management plan from 2001, the D O T identified benefits of the site as having onsite mitigation for streams and vegetated wetlands, water quality enhancements in an intensely developing watershed, which we're seeing the development come, water quality functions in the sensitive Newt River Basin, rotated in proximity to the mainstream of the river, opportunity to preserve existing mature forest, opportunity to maintain extent buffers, preservation of established mature plant communities, provide aquatic and terrestrial wildlife habitat corridor in the suburbanizing area, and opportunities to enhance and continue greenway trails and open space, and opportunity for recreation and public education in a diverse wetland upland complex. So we hear a lot during development, we want you to preserve open space. This land is preserved, is not gonna be built upon. It is mitigation land. However, the opportunity here is to make it a kind of a passive park where people can actually get out and enjoy the unique features of this property. It touches three specific areas of our strategic plan, connective and inclusive, sustainable and active and healthy. And as I mentioned before, it is a strategic priority of this council as discussed in quite a few of our retreats and our strategic planning documents. So in the further push that, it is located there about where that orange star is, firmly in our future park planning areas. We also have an opportunity, hopefully if we can make this work, to partner with Hodge Road, Hodge Road Elementary to provide some educational opportunities for students. This is hot off the press. We just got these signs in last week. We have educational signage that will be making its way back to the environmental park back here. We had it a long time ago. We had some signs out there. They disappeared. We're bringing them back. So hopefully we'll have Lockhart coming over here for some educational opportunities in the future. But this is just an example of what we could do in this park area. Further in the planning, this is in our Knightdale River District Small Area Plan. There's concepts there. And in our comprehensive transportation plan also shows multimodal transportation with the greenway along the river. Connections, there's connections with this parcel we could explore. You know, this is all future stuff. We could explore connections with Anderson Point Park or another connection to that side of the river, to that greenway system. We already have one connection over at Princeton Manor. There could be one further up on this side of the, of the highway there. And then it connects to several greenway trails and connects to Hodge Road Elementary and Knightdale owned land itself. Has diverse landscapes and varied topography for hiking and scenic overlooks. I think the plan itself mentioned like a 30 foot scenic, 30 foot scenic overlook that gives you views broadly. So pretty interesting site, would be a great opportunity. So what we've been working on, we've had a couple of meetings with N C D O T. And I put a updated land management plan at your seats before the meeting tonight. This is the plan we plan to submit to N C D O T, kind of formalizing our request. It kinda gives them information on how this all connects to our strategic, or yes, to our strategic priorities and goals for the town Knightdale. And once they review that, this is kind of the, hey, can we do this or not? So we will submit this and we will wait for D O T to say yay or no. But we just wanna get you updated where we're at. And I'll be happy to take any questions or comments.
The only comment I have is all gas, no brakes.
Yes, sir.
We wanted to see it move forward.
You give me a green light, this will be submitted this week.
This is one of those projects that everyone has always agreed is a great idea. And it's been really difficult to get it moving.
Yes. We've had a lot of conversations.
Those 30 foot, the 30 foot overlook feature, could that look like a fire watch tower? I'm just wondering.
So the land, there are limitations. Obviously, I think one of the biggest ones will be seeing a asphalt greenway trail may be a difficulty. We're proposing doing the hex pave or just sticking with a mulch trail in areas. I kinda threw the hex pave in there as like an alternative. Maybe like if we could get approval for that, that'd be great. But the whole key here from the Army Corps of Engineers is leaving this as disturbing as little as possible here. So there's some natural kind of places where you wouldn't have to remove a lot of vegetation to have natural kind of trails. I think the idea is to kinda leave it as natural as possible in hopes of getting approval and opening this land up.
So this one has been, I don't like strategic goals that languish. This is becoming one of the more innovative ones. Obviously there are variables here beyond power control and year control. You know, we've gotten intimately familiar with the history of this property. And historically, I can understand why the state would be reluctant to move it forward. Development hasn't been there. There's still a lot, a lot of development matters to it. Now it's pretty straightforward. I had a question. Ryan asked me about this in the county. He's very interested to see what the board, I mean, there are a lot of stakeholders who advocate this. The appetite in the C D T has gotten much, much more appreciable and acknowledged here. And it doesn't give me a great feeling. I think there are different topics around Knightdale Station Park. And obviously we have to work out this cost implications to be, but I don't talk about it in the country. It's natural recreation trails that give us the opportunity to kind of capital grade agreement. That's just a thing. I think U T's will, we have the tools. This is the revised, this will be the 2025 request. This will be the first official, official request we've set in a while. But if you're ready to do this, that would be successful. And so it's going to be, that's, and we're gonna be back every year along with the county to the capital grade agreement, which is a success.
So a question, would this proposal be looking at Knightdale actually taking ownership of the land versus some type of lease from D O T? Because, you know, I was looking at the situation now with the Crabtree Creek, I mean trails and R D U. And all of a sudden, you know, that's becoming non feasible based on financials.
So this strikes, I think this strikes me as one of the core issues here. It's all these very times. U T has a program through which they have to be this to you or previous amount of, of, as you have to do a free process, as you can imagine, anytime you talk about impacting mitigation land, it's extraordinary. As a manager, I would be very comfortable with the matter of the word. If you want us to be into us and you approve and allow you to use it, the man is on this very easy, very manageable topic. If it's something where a type of lease or partnership needs to be in place, the limited amount of infrastructure, we're gonna put it anyway, still makes it financially in our business. You're talking about cutting the trails, cutting the trails. How do these trails not even be accessible? There is a limitation on service materials. You know, we're gonna see, right? You did proposals, the, the trail service, you made your environmental bar. It's not asphalt, right? It's still semi-perfect. It's gonna be accessible. We'll see how powerful it is. Do you have any more questions? We will be able to do either of those. The issue's not, the issue's not a lot.
Just kind of high level overview here. I know the, find the right place on the map. The portion of the, of our new server trail, you know, Silverstone owns that little sliver of land. And then there's just a tiny piece of mitigation land. And then it's back to town owned land in the north. Do we anticipate being able to achieve a paved connection that is out or?
That will be, we, we will ask, we are asking for that, but it will be up to D O T.
I would have to, I'm not watching it down the surface like on the, that, that you, ownership, service, up here, the, sure, even three dry factors historically that it, now the one that people, it's such a, like.
And I would be opposed to even, you know, making that trail connection, switching the surfaces, maybe even having some educational signage about why the surface switches.
That's a good option. We could also advocate for a land swap with pieces that are contiguous to that.
Understanding better what Mark was saying, the question about we own that parcel next to Princeton Manor, next to the train tracks. You know, could we look at offsetting the impact of a paved surface there by tying up our town owned land in like deed restricting it as we're doing the rest of it? Essentially offering mitigation land for the mitigation land.
So what you're saying is for free bar?
Yeah. Oh, for sure.
We also have land over Mingo Creek next to the school as well that we might barter with. So.
Who would use all, all of that, all the trunks?
All the trunks. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Alright, now any non-agenda items to discuss? If we have none, then now may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On who?
Alright.
Any opposed? Majority approves. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for joining us this evening.